A number two oh four of First Ninety Methodist Church. Father Father, family, and everybody, our own mayor, Lieutenant Williams.
Dear Lord, let this meet you unsmootherly, let the leaders lead, and let there be peace in this community. And let everybody, um, let, let everybody have a safe passage from here.
They read it. Let them visit us to the life of the United States of America, and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under your power, indivisible, with the better of its人民, justice, and all. To begin again, Lord, I want to thank, uh, the chapter eight for giving our education, and the people eight for truth number two oh four, which is, uh, First Ninety Methodist Church. I am also as God master is, Mr. Tipo Hill. I want to thank you all for coming. If you'd like to stand for a second, some of you around applause please. These individuals will be early in their community and marriage for attending our service, our meeting tonight. Uh, as we move forward, we have a public comment period, um. Oh, go ahead, sir. Okay, motion set for the further item number two until the next surgery, um, any further discussion? All papers break right in. All right, the motion carries, and that's thank remove that little Fred out of there. Okay, uh, our public comment here. We have, uh, individual assignment, Mr. Chester Dawson.
Good evening.
Good evening.
First of all, I'm the cousin, kind of, in the honor for inviting me to voice my opinion today. It's been quite some hours. Uh, we've been discussing a certain issue in which, uh, it's one of the second term now, but every time I see him, he said, I don't want to talk about it. But I appreciate you giving it before to say some things about what's been troubling you. And I think that this is also troubling the brother toward the community. What I'm speaking about is, uh, Overlook Park. That's my bring it up scumming up. Take a little back before I get there. You guys brought from living with, uh, Saint Louis. I was, uh, a student of his, played football for wonderful years, which that's a good relationship. He was a father away from home. He was a hero to me. I moved to Colorado, I graduated from the Bay Academy almost nineteen seventy six, graduate of the Bay Academy. Proud of that class because we were the first chorus in the state of Georgia to get superiorists. Uh, I think they still carry that program to the day, Messiah, if y'all familiar with it. But here, I just want to give a little bit about me. Okay, uh, I'll make it brief because I love that good stuff. The issue at hand is Overlook Park. I've been crabbing fishing there from my young days up until the time I moved back from Colorado. I moved to Colorado in seventy six and I came back to the same situation. Situation that I want to speak briefly on, I hope that it can get resolved and we can put our differences aside and, and do something for the common cause, for the community, the tourists as well. On several occasions, I've had tourists come up to me that love that park and want to fish and want to crab. The only problem we have out there, no restaurants. No restaurants. Now, we can do better than that. We can do better than that. My wife would not go back to the Wrigley because I was allowed to go to use the bathroom in the bushes. And I would think that that's what we stand for here today. People want to have a good time, but they also want to get to use facilities and maintain their state. I've seen a lot of tourists leave the call in this same problem. I've witnessed men with their own hands doing things that they didn't want to do, but they didn't want to leave that area because they were crabbing. Well, they won't do it. We need to get a system out there where we can use the bathroom, the tourists can come through and feel like they're wired up there safely, uh, using the ba- bathroom, uh, without sanitary reason, if you got stupid in the bushes to, uh, maintain their state. So that's my calls for being here today, and I want to thank you, cousins, for giving me this opportunity to say what I have to say. And I have my part of why I'm still on here, and I hope that this legal somebody here. We need restaurants at Overlook Park. The only way you use a restroom out there, I'm sure tourists, you gotta go across the street to use a restroom. That's not working. We can do better than that. Let's put our differences aside, do something for common good, brother, and children. Thank you. You go out there.
Thank you, Mr. Dawson. Appreciate you being candid in your expression of, uh, what's going on out there. Just see the man in the green, get, uh, your restaurant.
I understand that the other grocery agent is preparing to bring proposals to you in the next meeting. You've been working that first proposal's getting over there, made some adjustments to the back again, and it's coming to you very soon.
It must take quite a long time. I'm sure people can't hold it that long. Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Dawson. Also, uh, uh, Mr. Madam, first, is there anyone else who would like to speak?
Yes, Mayor Harvey Mike Parrish.
Correct. Please state your name and address.
Uh, yes, my name is Mike Parrish, I'm the president of Saint Simon's, uh, one oh three Condesable Drive. Um, thank you for, ladies and gentlemen, for allowing me to come here tonight. I'm the president of the Brunswick Quanis Club. I had an opportunity to speak to all of you a few months back about the agenda item number four, the Mary Ross, um, of clap. Consideration for that. Um, I do know there's been changes in consideration from one of my fellow Quanis members. And other gentlemen, hopefully can speak to some other things tonight. Uh, but again, wanted to be here for our club. Uh, as you know, one of our annual events has been going on for twenty plus years, which is the Brunswick Stupid League. Um, that was started, uh, long before my time here, but it's been a community event that we raise in conjunction with all these club. Made a lot of money for our club. I apologize, I don't have my notes, but we integrated it, I'm reading it a few months ago, we integrated again. Um, we, we raise approximately twenty-five thousand a year through four fundraisers, and this is one of our largest. Um, I respect that, you know, we are one of several things that happens one time a year, but it's a big event for us. It carries a year's worth of activity. Uh, there's months in planning, uh, and there's some consideration for the plan regarding the tents, activity booths, et cetera. But hopefully, when you all look at the final plan, you'll keep in mind, not only us, I should be in RUs for, for a large community event. Um, there's a lot going on in Port Royal territory in there. I've only been here over forty years. I've seen more activity just in the last probably six, eight months enthusiasm. Uh, you come down to downtown on First Friday, I come down many times during the day to show property. There's a lot of energy going on, and what you know, I know there's a lot of things in the park that are being concerned. I hope it doesn't erode what can happen in community, large community events like our Stupid League, the DNR Coast Fest, and other organizations that may very well want to use that park. And hopefully it won't be, it'll be conducive to some final plan, but I hope you'll keep that in mind. Again, I'm speaking on behalf of our Brunswick Quanis. And, uh, again, I appreciate your time to sit and allow me to see you all in here and trust a sound decision were made for the better and the community. So thank you all for a lot of the sound.
Thank you, sir. Thank you for your comments. And we appreciate that, uh, your, your comments and, uh, Quanis and DNR, uh, will be taken in consideration after we move forward with making our final decision on very well. Appreciate that.
David Bowles.
Oh, yes, Mr. Bowles. David Bowles, twelve oh two, Gasset Street, Brunswick, Victoria. Here to talk about the Mary Ross Park, Mary Ross Master Plan. Late in the game, obviously, when we arrived here in fourteen, uh, but there was a master plan in place. In seventeen, I believe, there was a architectural, a venture architectural firm, uh, employed to do a site plan, not a change of the master plan, that showed the water park and the playground in a different area. Today's plan, which is different both in what the implementation of the playground structure was to be, is yet in a different location. And the splash park is shown in this plan is different than the one that was shown in the seventeen plan. And both of those are in a different location than were shown in the master plan. Where I come from, and I paused, you know, fuck, I'll say, why don't you go back? But, you know, where I come from, when you change your master plan, you in fact invite a group in, they look at that, and they change the master plan, not submit a site plan and move things around. Again, if I were on the master plan review board at the time, I would probably say, why don't you still move the playground to where it's supposed to be? Because I've heard no real reason how it got there is. So again, I just wish before we put the consent agenda, I'll consider leaving the larger area open for what I think other people are looking for. Take the buildings off of two thousand and fourteen plan and say that Farmer's Market is being retained and that the disney structure is being retained, which in the fourteen plan, there are no. Just trying to bring them all up to date. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Bowles.
Brad Brown.
Please state your name and address.
Brad Brown, nine hundred and forty straight month. Um, I always think about the park, but specifically in regards to, uh, I've heard that the leadership model may be relocated into the Baptist Park, which on the surface sounds like a great idea to tie in all that, but I think when we look back at why that leadership model is where it is. Originally, the J L Shipyard left the Brunswick after World War Two, they had a scale model of the leadership. It was totally burned at the intersection of, uh, Saint Thomas Hospital and Highway Seventeen. Over time, deteriorated, uh, the, uh, model, and disappeared, uh, probably scrapped unfortunately. So my tenure, uh, we re-insated the rebuilding of that leadership model. Uh, and it was definitely not just by the city itself, it was definitely by, uh, Veritable Commission, uh, the harbor pilots, uh, upon calling for a garden, uh, by many owners in the community who were involved and engaged in some importance of Veritable shipping here and rolling itself for the issue we have. And so the location, we decided to put it there at Veritable. One, we looked at Highway Seventeen and the old local center there, but the thought was, you know what? Traffic can see it, people can fly out back, and they can't get out, look at it and enjoy it. And where it sat out for some twenty-five years, uh, a lot of tourists, a lot of local citizens are able to walk up to it, enjoy it, and take it in with that perspective of ships in the background, river in the background. Baptist Park, unfortunately, even though it's still close to the river, it won't have that visual effect, it won't have that visual impact. And I think we will lose some of the draw for downtown. Though it's close to downtown, it's really not part of downtown, uh, where the Baptist Park would be. I think that location, the very cross park, really keeps that community, the little community, keeps that title. It gives us, the city of Brooklyn, another piece for people to come and see us and enjoy while we have. So I should encourage you to keep that where it is, adjust the plan a little bit, uh, but if that being important, then it can keep elements of that park out of the community. Thank you.
Thank you, sir, for your comments.
I can add something to that, uh, with the model left at all, the bad cop and will cop and closed in three two. It wound up at a bad cop and will cop and sat out there. Then they announced the closing of the bad cop and will cops in eighty, thirty eighty, not nineteen eighty. And Brett said it didn't lie, they got trapped. When they started doing stuff around out there, nobody came to get the models, it went in the rat car. So they think that's done. The beginning of the man, uh, going through the, the, the black summer of the war, and it would have been a great thing. Got thought of the plan, wasn't it?
Okay. Uh, of course, was I concerned, uh, Mr. Woodside says, take on that, that model. And, uh, they, uh, want to, uh, more likely, they own something for what they'd like to have located. Anyone else?
Yes, Mayor. Tipo Hill.
Yeah, please state your name and address.
Uh, Tipo Hill, two zero one, Red Maple Lane, Brunswick. Mr. Mayor, I'm sure, thank God, I'm letting you speak. I'm here for, uh, Mayor Ross as well. Uh, I'm a Quanis Club member and chairman of the Brunswick Stupid League Committee, which is a separate entity that works with the Quanis Club, go on the Stupid League. I mean, we were here, uh, some of us ago, expressed some concerns about the, the plan for our, um, and the footprint and the plan that was approved by the URA. Basically, the same is what was presented before as far as footprint goes. And the impacts and concerns we have about how the Baptist Stupid League are exactly the same as they were several months ago. Uh, she came by my office following up, uh, my talk last time, and we went over some things, and the, the don't know, I'm a land surveyor. So I deal with distances, layouts, you know, all day long, that's what I do. So we look at distances and things that we can do, um, and it was basically, you've got to make your stupid league get this design is what, what came out of it. Um, I felt like all of our concerns were dismissed, basically, and I'm going to incorporate it into the new plan based on the fact that the footprint did not change. Um, and our biggest concern are the tents in the stadium. Um, you know, not every square foot of Mary Ross Park is empty. And if you get closer to the building, you've got slippery terrain that you have to deal with, you've got drainage inlets that are out there, you have light poles, and all that stuff factors in where we're trying to put these tents and set up, you know, this event. Um, and I said before, you know, that, you know, Mary Ross is, you know, a fine event venue for this, not only the city, but the county. There's nowhere, nowhere else really, uh, mainly, Hood County, that you can hold a lot more events with a space like that. Uh, you know, Coast Fest is also very concerning, spoke within last Friday. Um, and they have great concerns that they ought to speak out, whether the state government, they won't be like, they're telling the city what to do. But their concern is as much as this Stupid League is. Um, so there was a plan, I showed, uh, Mr. Bennett, it was produced by, I'm assuming the URA. They had the splash pad and everything to further force closure with less impact on open space. And I, I was told that plan is no longer in place, it might be considered, it was going to be the plan to do splash pad out to the middle of, you know, that front end area for all of it. So, uh, uh, really, uh, I was all the, the plan is just being presented, um, and then kind of reconfigured so that the, the open area, the dense on the playground can stay, um.
Thank you, sir. Thank you for your comments. Is anybody else in the audience who'd like to, to, uh, make, make comments before it's all just figured out? Okay, thank you. Okay, uh, commission is moving right along, uh, I want to miss, I need to update. Um, I have one plan that deals with commission chairman Dave Bowles, here to update on the commission's progress. Thank you, Mr. Bowles.
I have members of the commission, again, past chair for the year eighteen nineteen, and now chair for the year nineteen twenty, which will be my last term based on our bylaws.
Yes.
Uh, we had eleven meetings, uh, we had over fifteen applications running from a zoning, or rezoning, excuse me, proxy, to leasing abandonment for Sundance that was on Norwich. Uh, I consider first year learning, getting started, finding purpose, uh, bit of fire. Uh, I think today we say we're running on all eight, and, uh, firing like a kid. I think the last time I mentioned, or maybe before you present myself as the first chairman, you asked me who my members were. I know all their names now. We, we, I, we know our charge now, uh, you know, we're here to help, you're, you as the commission and citizen of Brunswick, you understand zone. All of our members have fulfilled their educational, all the voting members have fulfilled their educational requirements, and some are slated to do more this year, including myself. Um, our first CUPD, initial news permit was for the golf court, so, golf cart surgeon bear over across the forest parkway. I'm happy to say that business is up and running now and producing revenue for the city. Uh, our second, one of our others was Sundance, which is, um, one of the first rejuvenation projects down there on Norwich Street, and, uh, revenue for the city. I believe you use higher orders to help us. I thank everyone who, um, came and worked on that. And this upcoming year, uh, of course, we have our typical agenda, but you will see from us a, uh, suggested screening of upper buffering ordinance, uh, amendment. And what's going on here, one of our purposes is to screen and buffer, I don't want to say in a slightly different uses, screen buffering. And yet we have a definition in our ordinance, so we're, we're a little perplexed, a little blind when it comes to suggesting something. So we're going to try, put something right, and then come to do a bit of a public hearing, all those sort of things. Let's see. So other than that, we've chosen three or four things out of the short-term goals of the comprehensive plan. Again, for our work plan for the year, and, uh, our, hey, sir, y'all, uh, both things that we should be working on. That's why we think we're here.
Hold on a second. Any questions, Mr. Bowles? Comments?
I would just like to say thank you. We really appreciate the work and effort y'all do. I think it's helped us, uh, the commission move forward, uh, making more and more decisions. Uh, y'all have been a nice job preparing him on the city staff, and we appreciate it.
It's like you know, it's a long time out here, you have a voice, and I, I, I'm not at all, which we're very kind.
Very good. We love, like, again, I want my thanks well to you. Uh, I see that, uh, this commission is a lot more proactive than reactive. Uh, just don't wait for it. Thanks that comes to you guys. Lord, you watch, and God, we really make the point that comes to you all. So that's very appreciative of this, this commission here. So, uh, thank you for your genuine, thank you for your time, thank you for your effort, and also certainly to do for, for us here at City of the South. Thank you, Mr. Bowles. All right.
Thank you.
Commission, commission moving right along, fellow carrying item number three, alcohol sales violations. Uh, that's your, your number three, uh, Officer Elliott presented.
Good evening. Just to have a brief review as to what we spoke about last commission meeting, um, in regards to eighteen hundred L Street, the L Street Lakers. Their first offense of underage sale was last year, two thousand and eighteen, um, last summer. They sold to an underage individual, however, upon receiving the video footage, there was an event presented that was later seized by the police for being, uh, like identification card. So there was nothing against the store at that time, uh, which I know is the next story. The commission voted for the six months probation going into the new year for the renewal period. And while on probation, they were cited, uh, for, uh, the department revenue for selling ice cups out of the back window, as well as people that go walking in the store purchasing alcohol. They were cited for on-site consumption by myself and people while still on probation. And then they had their second offense of underage sale, which the employee was unable to be identified at that time. And then followed up with a citation for the department revenue for not giving them the heads up. And don't mind that, that current citation is out of state.
It seems that, uh, Mr. Adams, you represent it?
That doesn't matter to me.
And it seems as you don't have any knowledge of, like, you have knowledge of, uh, being, waiting in your client.
Um, necessarily we do not. Uh, we have a letter that says that on June the nineteenth, the mayor, the commission, America took this up, but there was no notice given to the agency of what was going to happen or if it was going to be heard. And there is no specification in the notification that I had as received to be here tonight as to what they are accused of having done. And, um, there is nothing in this notification saying this happened on this day, you were accused of violating the law, disrespect on this day. There's nothing like that in the notification. It's not, so really, this would be clearly an unconstitutional action of the commission. If you take any adverse action, it ended up giving that fundamental due process, which is not what you're accused of.
Uh, I, I understand you, Mr. Mr. Adams, uh, but I also would say the individual lack of a license, and the license still places everything, everything that needs to be done, and everything, uh, the application for violation of that license. Uh, so, Mr. Attorney, can you, uh, address that issue?
The way it opened the streets, uh, the city commission took this up in nineteen eighteen, the ordinance reworked it. Thirty days of that decision, there is a notice, uh, for the right to appear in front of the commission, that's what it does, and I would be here. It's my understanding that the city marshal made aware of the citation violations of the state, uh, I'm sure the department revenue made it aware of the violations of that. Uh, at this point, we're looking for the, for the ordinance. If there's, you know, need to prepare further, you know, that can be brought up by Mr. Adams. But I believe that it did notice the, the night of the year, but the, the marshal, city marshal was elaborate, uh, certainly.
I, I don't know of any specification of the charges that's ever been communicated to that.
Well, we showed it before for all of them. No, I did not specify the charges in the letter. I didn't feel that was necessary. It was discussed at the last commission meeting, as Mr. Brown was just talking about. So the letter simply said, this is your opportunity to come to find a definition for your hearing. And you're here, and so was the other store.
Mayor, you, Mayor, you what? Orders are, they, 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 they.
They signed their citations and they showed it, I believe.
They, well, I don't know, it could be signed, but that does not have anything to do with it, but it was filed, I don't know.
Okay, so I update the commission on underage alcohol sales and violations. I, it doesn't require me having them here for that. This is what requires them. This is what requires them to be here because at this point it's their time to represent what happened at this store.
Yeah, but in order to appear, if the, if the, if you're not one of the accused of that, and that has not occurred, and then somehow there's something that's occurred here, it was a shooting, it was like a D, I said, it is retarded, it was what we had.
Well, Mr. Adams, uh, your client violated, uh, uh, orders and they, they got cited for that, and they had a hearing, I'm sure, of, of for that. If you're on that hearing, I'm sure that they was told about why they took it, they had a hearing. This is to decide what commission would do, do with their license.
With all due respect, Mr. Eric, so you are saying that they are guilty, that they're...
I'm not, I'm saying, I'm saying a citation itself speaks for itself. You can say whether they're guilty or not guilty, it doesn't matter. A citation speaks for itself. We are here to, to determine as to what we would like to do.
I'll contribute some action.
And then I'll tell you, your client can give it to you, sir.
If, if, if I could, if it would please all parties that are involved in this, we can obviously continue the hearing until the second meeting in August, present all of whatever Mr. Adams needs to him and bring him back, and all parties prepare his favor, if that's the will of the commission.
Also, the underage alcohol sale for L Street when the employee could not be identified, the citation was not completed. However, it was, you know, I spoke to the owner personally because I also did a search warrant on his establishment, but I'm having proper documentation on these employees. And the citations were presented on premise, the owners saw that sign. The citations for Owen Miles, the owners saw that sign. So outside of that also is the only ones that have gotten in part by the order and had guilt in his position is the last, um, the state, the L Street Liquors in reference to them not letting them know about municipal violations, and Owen Miles does not, they quit, they're a regular today, they quit not to, so they'll be set for another trial date in the future.
Uh, commissioners, I think just maybe sort of very, sure. Commissioners, uh, we, uh, both sides will, uh, definitely, like, to make this and defer this out till we get all the information and then they come, and that would give Mr. Adams enough time to prepare his defense.
I want to say something, um, and, and, and be specific in that notification, um, outline the detail, dates, specifics, ordinances, code violations, um, whatever it was, be specific in that documentation. I can understand what you're saying, um, to get a, a notice and not have the violations identified, if you're saying that this is a new process, process, and not to have the specifics of what the new process is supposed to be being exercised upon, then they had the opportunity to be at the last meeting. So that may, that does not negate their new process, um, rights, um, but they should have been here at the last meeting, then they would have truly understood what was going to be coming for them this week. But I do understand that we need to do our due diligence for any potential judicial processes to go forward from this point, is to be specific and identify each one of those violations. They are aware of, but when you got your documentation, you don't have to do a whole lot of talking, because the documentation speaks for itself. You know, identify all of those things, be specific in what you're saying, what you're doing, quoting the Georgia laws, quoting the city's rules and regulations, be specific so we can move on from this one. And, and any notices coming already, those things need to be identified and, and, and forthcoming notices. So we should not be just sitting and saying that you have a hearing today. We should be identifying that stuff so they do have a true judicial process that they're able to exercise and identify themselves and defend if they need defended, and for us, um, to, for that, and we are not a defendant, but for us to be in opposition as well. So we need to have our notices documented, our notice saying we have a hearing, that I would be like, what if I come here and identify for me what I'm here for and be specific in those things and those, um, future notices that's going to go out.
Thank you.
Say, you have?
I didn't hear the motion.
I mean, I don't care.
Is that on both, both situations?
If you represent both parties?
Yes.
I motioned to get set to defer this item with, uh, uh, L Street Liquors and going out of the liquor, uh, until, uh, we get the information to them as stated, uh, in further discussion.
Mr. Mayor, I would also, I can say, uh, in the future, they would, if they were invited, they would be able to look at what the process is, because even when they, they get a license, they're told about these violations, uh, whether they can remember it or whether they can read it, or they, you know, it's in the code, it's in the order. If you violate, and it can come before the city commission, and the city commission will make the decision as to your license, because the city issue you that license. And if you violate the city ordinance, certainly my, to do anything of that nature, then as a commission, we have that right to, uh, you know, to properly your license or to, to suspend your license. That is our purpose. And they should know this if they have alcohol licenses in the city of Brunswick, it should be known and it should be understood.
I think that's, that's true, uh, Mayor Portevan, I'm, I'm, I'm almost, uh, certain that, uh, that legal counsel knows this well, how, the, the, the process, uh, part is what we're dealing with here, so, so you're, you're right on that aspect. All right, any further discussion? Hearing the all the favorable raise your right, I'm going to defer. I'm going to carry. Thank you, Mr. Adams.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Is that in both cases?
Yes, both cases. And we will keep you noticed as to when the next hearing will be. Item number four, uh, consider approval of June nineteen, two thousand and eighteen work session and record scheduled meeting minutes of June twenty-sixth, two thousand and eighteen, and June twenty-sixth, two thousand, special call meeting minutes. This is when you got to deal with our budget, uh, everybody.
I'm hoping that we are free, and record scheduled meeting minutes.
Second. What about this special call?
Special call, we're, we're, in that moment.
If it probably wasn't second for us for the approval of the June nineteen work session and the record scheduled meeting minutes, and also the June twenty-sixth special call meeting minutes, I hear any further discussion? Hearing now, all the favorable raise your right, I'm going to carry. Thank you. Item number five, consider approval of bid for the demolition of structure located at twenty-four hundred Riddle Street, the Grand Ice, the visiting, oh, it's the town hunters visiting. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, Mayor Commission. I appreciate you being here tonight, and, uh, she's, uh, on vacation this week. I feel a little calm. Um, back in June, you asked to consider, uh, bids to demolish the Riddle Street School. The city's going to do more to accomplish this, uh, to help forward to, uh, to clean up area. Uh, there were advertised bids for demolition that, and the project would consist of furnishing all labor materials and equipment necessary for demolition of the structure, including cleanup and any incidental work to complete the project. Uh, this would include the demolition of the structure, move up all materials from site, and also create even stabilization of the property after demolition. Uh, the city as part of this had a, an asbestos survey of the property completed that did indicate that there was asbestos present, not surprising that the agents believed. Uh, our asbestos contractor submitted a quote for that, a payment to take place of fifteen thousand, two hundred and eighty-four dollars, um, that would remove the floor cover and masthead, uh, and, and other materials that were found, uh, as part of that process and follow E P U's regulations for the disposal. Um, the bids themselves, uh, were done several of these parts of this process, and the bids that were received, uh, were as follows, Jay Myers Company, ninety-seven thousand dollars, Tristar America, one hundred and forty-seven thousand dollars, Fleet Demolition Services at a hundred and eleven thousand dollars, and Target Contractors at a hundred and eighty thousand dollars. Um, staff recommended that come in here with the lowest bid at ninety-seven thousand dollars, change that Jay Myers, and the legal system, move forward with the asbestos payment, through the payment, to, um, as different companies services for this. I know you all heard all about this before, so if you've got other questions, I know that there was a lot of discussion at the time about the, the asbestos material. Um, that was something that, um, typically when you have that, you bring in the company to do, be tested, and that same company also does the disposal. So you, you, you might, maybe another company will come in and be testing, to then also give us fair prices of that, um, even if we don't have a separate, uh, thing.
Questions for Mr. Adams, commissioners?
How was, uh, how would they do it? Um, we have used them, um, in demolitions, uh, through my time with the city. Uh, we did, we did not go out to a full bidding, typically because you have to pay twice for testing. So you, you, you would get a testing report from one company and then pay a month for testing to make, so that they know what they're bidding, they're not going to share the quantities and information that you're referring to another. Um, we alternated through a couple of different companies over the years. This just happened to be the one that we could get to the site, had the time, we agreed we'd work to be able to give us the information we needed with access.
Any questions, other questions?
And this, this is all acoustic calls, because I remember the last time, the biggest concern we had, um, we had some, like, the terminology, some piecemeal, and so we wanted to show totality.
This would come from the totality of the project between these two items, the demolition contract and the separate asbestos removal, which, um, which we have.
So the total cost, that was the ninety-seven?
Uh, no, no, ninety-seven plus the fifteen, it's great.
Okay. Do you need to, uh, vote, vote?
I don't believe you need to vote for the asbestos, I think, also, the city just heard you be able to prove that, we included that information, so you knew what the total costs, people were talking about.
I understand, or something, that you said that Jay Myers Company had used them before their levels of correct?
Yes. And they're low, they're, you don't, you don't anticipate any change or... No, sir, this should be straightforward, when we get the money, we have locations.
Now, we talked about some salvage and trying to say, you know, you could have any out there, you come up with any, 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 bricks, or, I would, all kinds of stuff.
You know, I, that was something that was discussed, um, I don't, I don't know if it would actually save us anything from what we found out estimates, and it would create a much longer project because everything would be sorted on site. Uh, and that was one of the opportunities we looked at, if we put another local group that is interested in dating the project, it could maybe give us really the information we need, uh, to judge whether we're going to do it. Other than, it would take months to demo, like, sort through it and handle the project. Uh, so we did not include that in this bidding.
Really, if we're going to fill up land, they would watch the bricks, and we could use that, they're not somebody, and we could, we're in a hurry to do something.
Would, would that be cheaper than this one?
We don't, because we couldn't get people to give us real quantities of how long it would take to disassemble all of this, what value we might be able to get out of any salvage.
You won't know what that should check.
We, we, we intend to that.
I think I made it clear that I wanted to know what could be salvaged out of the office.
But if we can't get that information, sir, there's no way for us to be able to get that information too.
We did make that request, I'm not sure, they, they come out and say, we come a pedestrian to the neighborhood having some secure products of steel and trying to sort it out, it's in the middle of a developer residential neighborhood, becoming industrious and, uh, easier. Um, we moved it outside, not being secure of the property in its entirety, with the streets and residents around it, and they indicated if there's anything to salvage, they figured they might take it out and might have something back to feed the neighbors. So I think I could just salvage it, I said, it would be easy to get, it would be bricks. Then I could take the points, salvage, generate a couple of wire, and just still eating a brick, and indicated it takes several months to do that, and some of our proposals were six, six, six months, six, seven, about six, seven months, and we had to figure out and get that, and then back to do that.
Any other questions?
I can answer a question, I can, what you did, uh...
The Burghville let school was, was...
Yes, sir, it sure was.
They salvaged that.
They did some salvage on that, that's true, and I think I...
I'm, I'm, I'm trying to understand, school board can do it, why can't we do it?
We could probably increase the cost of the salvage for us if we were to keep them, I don't want to keep them, so they would sell it, but I believe it's part of their, if you're setting the cost, they realize what they may be able to salvage. They said we want to keep those things, they probably have the cost to do. I'm not saying it's all going to the left, or I'm saying that they're going to attention to, they're going to salvage, they're going to sell it, to reduce their operational costs and, 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 we said, we'd like to keep those, I mean, for a long time.
So, so is that, is, is that cost waiting against the contractual cost for, if they, if they salvage, just using them for five months and pounds?
Maybe it won't reduce the ninety-seven, they're probably able, they might be able to bring in some of it and salvage, I think, the total cost, if that makes sense. We said if everything you salvage must be brought to us, then it might have been a hundred fifty thousand, it's not a higher.
I'm saying, is that coming off of, off of the top of what they're, they're saying that their contractual allowance? Uh, if they, if they salvage five hundred pounds of copper wire, then are they taking that cost off of what they're going to charge us?
No, they, they, they would charge just more, but they're realizing it might be a little bit savings in that, but they're also told they can't drag it out until you're done, so they're going to do some things on the, on, or, or, it could take hours and times to do this, to do this, to do this.
Any further questions? Comments? I, I've noticed that, uh, low bid is our lowest, uh, that's what we budget for, and the high bid is the highest we've been budgeting for, and has, uh, two overs right in between our best. Were there any reason why for that discrepancy like that, and they?
I, I would, I would assume that it was part, at least partially, because this contract is private, so that is going to add to the costs.
Is, uh, Jay Myers, don't you think?
Yes.
Okay. I think, somebody a bit of that, um, can, can, uh, cheaper than, than those. No further questions, um, for the approval of this, um, this, uh...
Next one, what's, what's, do they have, uh, a, a, who's you think? Would that be in the contract?
That'll be in the contract, but we would work to have it as quickly as possible.
I was also, I'm wondering if that, who's you think, it's going to be sixty-eight, thirty-eight, or twenty-one, which will be?
I'm sure they recommend that this, uh, project, uh, with time fact, to be signed by... by somebody else. If, no further questions, the comment, I entertain a motion please.
It's now our motion to approve the demolition of twenty-four hundred Riddle Street for Jay Hyer's company at ninety-seven thousand.
Second?
The project motion second for approval of demolition of a structure located at twenty-four hundred Riddle Street to bid to Jay Hyer's Company LLC for ninety-seven thousand. Any further questions?
You know, I'll just add that perhaps the reason we cut ninety-seven thousand dollars bid on Hyer's is they're giving us ten, twelve thousand dollars for salvage out there. That's getting to, I don't like it like this, I really don't. I just don't like that. If I have something so many else to use, I don't want to have it. I think the city is running from me to thinking that way, or is it? I've always felt that way. I feel that way. Matter of fact, some of the old war crimes here, when I was ten years old, I helped the tear man, and I helped him salvage, and I cleaned the bricks up, and I cleaned the land out of my, and I took it from someone, two cents a brick, and five cents a pound for it. I know it could be done, you know? It just makes you pause. I do appreciate giving that out here, but though that is certainly, there's no question about that.
Any further comments? Hearing done, and folks please follow.
Commissioner Casey, have you voted? Commissioner Mark, has he voted? Mayor Prossley, has he voted? Mayor Hart, has he voted?
Yes. Seems like everyone voted yes to that motion carries unanimously. Senator, please be aware of Mayor Prossley's request about time for the contract.
Yes, sir, so I had the time, I'm going to push on.
Thank you, motion carries, thank you. I feel like I have overlooked someone moving forward with this commission meeting tonight. I would like to present and introduce to some our new Assistant City Manager, Mr. Tened Myers. Please stand with us. This is our new Assistant City Manager. Governor, Governor Jordan, right on the road. We are glad you're here, and this was a great day for us here in the city of, um, can I say something? All right. Moving right on, item number six, consider approval of flood insurance renewal.
Is that time? Yeah. I'll say in your package, my staff report, but then also an Excel spreadsheet, which lays out this year's financial compared to last year's. We have three policies that are in that, like deepwater policies, and in total, they have only gone up three hundred and eighteen dollars for last year. Everything is staying the same, building boundary, content limit, on those end, we've got seven properties that are covered under the way of Woods and London. That total amount is not gone up. So basically, we've got the same coverage, everything is staying the same from one year to the next, I don't get the same that often. And our flood renewal that I'm asking you to approve tonight is a total of thirty-three thousand eight hundred and seventy-eight dollars and fifteen cents. That has been budgeted for the current fiscal year, and the renewals are due on August yet. So it's my recommendation that, that we renew these policies. Redmond, I don't have any questions, I'd like to answer.
I did want to ask about six or one, three. Redmond, we think that, so we want to have to screw it over in that city hall. We dropped it two years ago, and the problem is that it didn't have a basement, and under the flood toss, it's mainly the basement's not covered. The first elevator floor where all the offices, or most offices, is eight or nine feet above the street, so the proof was accessible and open, and it was a reasonable value. They recommended that the city property cover this. We also have a blanket community limit under the master city property policy that would cover that building. We did the same thing last year with this building for the same reasons.
So it sounds like we don't have the coverage. We do this, that we're looking at really as additional cover operations on top of what we have.
We got all the equipment out of the basement, we do all the plumbing, everything's out of there.
No, we have new servers and mounted house.
We all have everything now from now on, it is a control.
Have we had any water in the basement?
No, we leave all the storage we did. And what we did is try to destroy, remove the servers from the basement, so they're not going to be reconstructed.
They go up to the first point, we have warning, like we did with the hurricanes. They are going to be this.
Somebody had to check those drains going down the Union Street, and I'm building there, they really need to get those plums getting, keep, they never keep them all out there.
So, fourth, please? Any questions, please? Any questions, please? No, I entertain a motion please. It's a mere, I have a motion to approve the, for the demolition renewal as presented. Motion second for approval of flood insurance renewal as presented, any further discussion? Hearing done, on the paper, please raise your right hand. Motion carries, thank you so much. All right, Commissioner's item number seven, consider approval of relocation of bouncing packages to the, alcohol license. That, are we done that?
There's one, I'm going to investigate there, I have to refer to that, that station.
I entertain a motion to, for that. Motion second to, for item number seven, to make certain, any further discussion? On paper, please raise your right hand. Motion carries, they would prefer that to. Item number eight, consider approval of reviving Red Wall Park Master Plan. Mr. Rob Bennett is presenting, he's our chairman of URA.
Commissioner, we deserve your permission. We also have our architect, Robert Stetson. I'm happy to come up on the chair just in case there's a question you may want to ask him.
Matthew is, is, just a little presentation, I want to show you along the street, and I'm amazed by how much he's done. Just a little personal note, we want to do a word of thanks to Matthew Field. He's been working, kind of worked with us in the RIA for three years, and Matthew's been a magnificent support to us. The presentation that we're seeing and that he announced, what he had here, he went on a relatively short notice, he had a whole visit, so just wanted to let him know personally how high and certain that you are, we also appreciate you. And I'm going to allow Mr. Stevens to say anything that he won't want to carry, but this is not only the presentation that you have, what you're seeing on, Mr. Williams, you're seeing on the monitor is the last revised master plan, that is also from the first sheet, right under this page here. Now, this is the first page, is, actually, the first two pages, called the two thousand and fifteen master plan. I wanted to kind of show you that, and on the backside of that is a kind of overlay or deliberate of that two thousand and fifteen master plan. Now, this master plan is also serving as a basis for what we are doing with the two thousand and seventeen, as well as the plan that you're, that you're seeing here. Now, on the two thousand and fifteen master plan, you will see that there are a few large buildings, the, the pavilion, as well as the farmer's market, all those things to raise, and a great and reduced amount of open space at the park. Once we, given the task of updating the Mayor Ross Park, one of the things we did, and we chose Mr. Stevens to do, is, you know, talk to the stakeholders and, and kind of make sure that we interviewed this, all those labels, including the postal school league and so forth, now, Post Fest at that time was having, having at Mayor Ross Park. Now, part of our task from you, from you all, was to try to make sure that the event that would be going at the park could be maintained, and that was one of our, that we, you know, we got that park, and with that, I'll just allow Mr. Stevens to say anything he wants, for your.
Mr. Mayor, there is the city commission, thank you. You know, our really major charge and goal was to get as much of the land, keep as much of the park flexible for these major events, and at the same time, have a daily draw of activity there, and that's this whole children's theme of the playground and the splash pad came all together with the pavilion there. There were several minor things that we adjusted in the park, but basically, the park stayed the same in the, in the two thousand and seventeen plan, other than to shift some things around, push this activity area up into the southeast corner of the park, close to, close to the downtown area in Beale, and at the same time, maximize the event space, and I think we were successful in doing that. We had to do a little shifting around of a couple of the items, but that's what you had to do, to give a lot of the event space and still have these draw of activity with families and children, you know, in a nice play in the activity area.
Okay, so if I can, I break your chain to this, this one here. All right, well, Mr. Stevens was just mentioning that all of our, the majority of our, of the building and the major changes was right in this southeast and north of the park. Right now, right in this section right here is the residence location of the playground area. Then, right in this area here, and this is really at the eastern portion of the park, is the location, proposed location for the flash, for the splash pad. Now, they're also looking at a kind of new pavilion area, right at center of those two areas, and a part of the reason for that is that we need an equipment room for the splash pad, and we wanted, and there was actually need to be restrooms in a certain proximity to it also. So what, a part of what we tried to do is, is to trump the, the equipment area, add some, some restrooms to that, to that area for the splash pad, and it's just, it just made a little more sense to have a restroom in certain strategic locations within the park, and right now, there's only one restroom right here, so you have to, and everyone that's in this park has to go over into this, this little area here to let those miniature restrooms space there. So we took all of that into consideration. Now, we do not have the architectural plan for this building yet, that's something that we will bring to you later, but right now, we're reserving that space for those enhancements. We are keeping the farmer's market active, the dual being at finishing off the interior of the existing pavilion, converting that into an information and welcome center. We do realize that there, that there is some use of that facility now for both the Stugley as well as the Post Fest and other activities. We are, we have taken this thing into consideration now, and so we'll bring back to you the proposed changes for that, but with the changes that we have in mind, we are keeping in mind everything that's taking place at the park. Again, our goal is to enhance the activities that's taking place at the park, not minimize it. One of the things that's taking place at the park is a lot of, there's a lot of fishing that goes on in the area, and so we're going to make it, you know, easier, as opposed to, we're not going to put fish on, but once you catch them, we're going to make it a lot easier to dress your fish and things like that at the park. There are, there's official landscaping and things like that, that we're at shading and that sort of things in the park. And so, and, and one other thing, right in this area, and this is in your handout also, we, one of the things we look at is adding and incorporating a native garden in the park, and that is in that, basically, the northeast corner of the park. Right now, that area of the park really isn't being used, even with the larger, with the larger activities, and that's just the time set, we're just going to do that there, if they have a question on native garden, we can address that now. So that's the overview of the park, kind of native. Okay, now, as Mr. Chief of Field mentioned earlier, I met with him and we looked at materials and what had here, and, and as someone else mentioned, there were several iterations of various layouts and things like that, and the reason why there are several iterations is that when we put some groups, kind of, some of the previous, and then, once that's noise about, then others come in, and one of the things we try to do is make sure we address everyone's need. Now, this layout is the last layout received from the organizers of the Stugley, and this layout kind of shows, if I'm not mistaken, I think this video is still here, and I believe this is the layout of the last Stugley that you had, is that the text?
We know, we're in pleasure and?
Yes, so you can see the playground is right there in gray, everything that they see that is in the gray. Now, right in the school area here is what they call it, that's the kids' area, and here, which is a critical area for them, is there about five, thirty, thirty-five, two, right along this area here, and it kind of goes from there. Now, we look at the white layout, that white layout is what we're calling the improved method, so basically, everything that we're proposing, and you see the layout here, in that white, this is where the playground area is, this area here is a general area of the splash pad of, and now, this outer perimeter here also includes, if there's things that take place, that will be the outer or extreme. that will be the outer or extreme area of the fencing also. So when I met with Mr. Field, the reason that we brought the splash pad kind of in this area here, we did not ignore his input or their input. We actually embraced it. And one of the things we, we looked at is that we shifted back, and I committed to move on, shift it back without tenths, which we did. And if we can adjust it back a little bit more, we will do that also. But we need to make sure that we leave enough space for the structures that will, that will be required to go in there. But right now, as you can see this dotted line, the Stugelie will be very, very minimally impacted when it comes to the way that they're laying things out now. Basically, if you look here, there's one tent that's kind of in that dotted area. They could, I'm not going to tell them what to do. That would be up to them. But you could, there are several things to be done. This could be adjusted back, drop wood, a tent be, or again, things to be tightened up, or to be shifted to another location. And then, we have a teak booth that they have there that's in the, in the improvement zone area. Now, and one of the things I mentioned to him is that once we construct that, that really there will be a space there if they wanted to eliminate that tent booth, literally they could utilize some of the space under the pavilion for us, for some of that activity. One of the things we trying to do is take into consideration of the, what the organizers and so forth and those that realize that the park is being managed. While we are doing this, if we can do some things to enhance what they're doing or make it easier for them to do certain things, we'll seize the advantage to do that especially if it's not going to cost very much. Now, so if you look at that, that is the layout from the Stugelie, of the Stugelie. And you can see right there, basically on this layout, you're talking about that kids' area that can be shipped in for what happened. Or you can create a larger kids' home, but that's up to them. And then the tickets area, and that's, and that's the only thing that's active from the way that they're utilizing the Stugelie now. Now, the Stugelie, I guess in the last year, a couple of years, you had around four thousand, so it was one of the five thousand. Big number, largest event was the Coast Fest. And the Coast Fest had nearly ten thousand participants last year. And so, now with the coast, I knew because of the, of the area what had you, we were able to accommodate this Stugelie. Our projections of, again, just using the map, we feel that we can, even with our improvement, we can have somewhere in the neighborhood of a billion, twelve, maybe up to fifteen or so thousand people depending on how compressed they are. But the way that the events are conducted now, we have a more relaxed, neutral, kind of open spacious kind of arrangement with everything that we're doing now. And so, we can get easily four thousand completed without any problem or anything like that. Now, this is the layout, this is the layout from the Coast Fest. I met with the Coast Fest organizers and actually, they've been very helpful and actually, on a relatively short notice, I called their information director and we met. And when I got there, within, within thirty minutes of the call, he was at, ready to meet. He had their whole team there. And this layout, they'd already made the adjustments that would be, if you look at this little area here, because our projections should have moved onto the main space, they'd already hedged that area now so that they would not consider that area in their, in their plans with this new Coast Fest, that top group there. And so, they made adjustments anticipating that we may begin. And so, so if you see here, the only thing, because they've already made their, their adjustment, the only thing that, that if this was done now, the only thing that they would have to do is to shift this tent back a little bit right here. Now, this tent here within this area at the last, at the last Coast Fest, that tent is where they have livestock and what happens, so having some of the shade and things like that that's important to them. And so, in order to compensate for the, for that, they're utilizing this area here, which is again, so you can see that an event literally more than, at least twice, probably more than twice of a Stugelie is accommodated without any, without any real issues. But again, now, we will work with any group that we can, but then we have the last few after three years we've been going back and forth. Now, there was one concern that the organizers had with the Stugelie, and that was that no, no, we would actually start things before the Stugelie. They didn't want to conduct Stugelie while you have construction going on and things like that. And in reality, with the splash pad, we could get that in the ground if we had it. But in terms of the architectural work, and so for that's why it should be done also, we are not going to be able to complete that this year in the now. So what I, what I committed to them and bring it to you all today is that we would not start any official work in that park this year until after October and the Stugelie has the timeline. And then, we'll be to try to have whatever done in place before the next Stugelie go into place. So that's a little window that we're hoping that we can work on. And that's one of the reasons why we do need this approved so that we can begin the process of getting set in order to meet those kind of timeline. I'll pause that case in one thousand questions.
How you ready for it?
Yes, sir.
You're saying that this accommodates twelve thousand people?
Yes.
Twelve thousand people?
Yes.
And you've got a test of that four thousand people and Coast Fest was how many people?
A hundred and fifty.
And they're complaining?
Well, Coast Fest, I'm not complaining. Coast Fest happened when they, and I talked with them. And I asked them, they had any concerns with that?
I did, I did, I did complain, but understand they were concerned, okay? There is a difference in being concerned and complaining. We need to listen to concerns also. I just throw that out.
No, you're correct, and I, and I did. And, and I communicated to them by email as well as in person and by phone. And this layout has come from them. And any concern that, the other thing that we're going to try to do even prior to this new Coast Fest, there are areas where power and water, only places, there are limited amount of power and water at this site. However, there's a lot of access to it. So it may be some of those things that we can do to make it even easier for them to do what they're looking at doing.
And another question for you. These changes, we know how many acres we got down there. We know what our acreage is, is that right?
Correct.
What is it acres?
Correct.
Lower? Right at the border, alright. With these plans, take everything, how much acreage do you own in the half that is not utilized? That is not taken up? How many square foot is going to be left if you would stand there, twelve thousand people? And less than forty with all this stuff that's going to happen? That's all we need to be sure of. Along with the, those, we don't have any expense, and I mean, we need to calculate that. And come up pretty close to what, where is your, you need to be able to, period of documents now?
You're, you're correct, and calculations is what we're using in order to calculate those numbers. And we're not giving a slide that now, when it comes to the square area, that's going to depend on the tent. Because when you tent, it depends on the size of the tent and if you want to displace it or come out of space. And so, as you mentioned, there's a defined amount of area there. And so, a part of what we look at, yes, again, you can use any free or signed square feet per person in order to determine how many people that will, that can get in. And we use a margin height number in order to ensure a minimum capacity of that, of that park based on how it's, how it's used. And so, if, and you can have the pictures, we're really not there for Coast Fest and the Stugelie. And took pictures to see how they use it. And right now, based on how they using the park, this area here where we're planning, and this area over here are the least, the least used areas in that park even with the Coast Fest. There, there are all the things that could be done to win obviously that there, yes, we have taken that into consideration.
And we're positive that this is not going to just fill up even over there. We're not going to have space. I have an offer that, these guys would.
Yeah, I, I, if we can fill it up, I think that's great because it's a, it's a gem. And it needs to be an estimation, and right now, we have some big events, but we don't have that daily weekend activity. We're starting in the playground because you'll see people there all the time now. The splash pad is going to be a real draw to bring families down there. So, you know, I don't, I think you got room, I think you got room for both. I'm sure there are different.
I, I just don't have any opinion. Once we get all that stuff in there, it needs to be calculated. And it'll be exactly what we're saying it's going to be so we can accommodate where we already can add to.
And, excuse me, and that's why, you know, we met with people at, with Coast Fest and Stugelie and then looked through all the old documents where the citizens put all their little stickers on what they wanted to see there. And reminders, there's not only more shade and a place to sit in the shade, but an activity area for families and for children. And that's what threw it into that, that southeast corner of the site. We felt that was a point.
And commission takes a, I think the commission marks that point also. The one thing we're looking at is, and I'm going to use this expression, near scale. And we saw the same near scale is, is that, you know, is typical aerial, aerial photographs. And the, you know, I believe both were organized because they needed something to scale or near to scale layout. That's why these things are sized as that here are. And this outline again is, I'm saying near scale. I'm being hesitant to say to scale because that it obeys a, a, a certain level of exactness that I had wanted to provide, but I don't know exactly how old them did figure. But just looking at the, looking at to a computer, which I have done and they have done, I can tell you that is near scale. Once you're actually there, face may shift, you're there a little bit, but that is at on near scale.
What we're saying basically is that we can take, we can put, basically three quarters of the population of the city of London Square. And we can, we can accommodate, we can, we can take care of it properly in here. You're not going to, you said a whole new one, that's what you're saying?
Yes, well, you're, you're correct. If the population of the city of London is sixteen to eighteen thousand.
We're fine now, we're fine now for sure, but it's just less than sixteen thousand right now.
And, and let me just put it out there, if the Coast Fest had ten thousand people in there, it would be based on your analogy, just over half of the population of the city of London. And you had more room for people, then it wasn't a really compact event. That would be your fear or indication as to the people that are in there without really understanding on one another.
I have a question. This is, you know, I think you're, you're personal, so.
Yes.
Did this layout?
That was done by Orion Planning Group, like it's 2015.
I'm looking at this, 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 this was approved?
I believe so.
This less space there, you have here?
That's correct.
And this was approved, why, why all of a sudden, we get off, and I, I understand this with the group and the Coast Fest, nobody said anything about this, right? It was approved, and nobody complained, and you got less space. Now, we got a situation where we're trying to give more space, and the more space we give, the more space we own. I'm just trying to understand, you know, how to go from this to this and to this. And everybody says, no, that's not, that's, we can't do that because we don't have enough space, but we approved this.
And what Mr. Powell said when he came up to present, he said our master plan had before. Even though now, we're trying to accommodate, yeah, a lot of other groups, we're meeting with more resistance than we had before. If we just went to put our master plan there before, I wonder whether, that's my question. Well, in, in, uh, Google, uh, that's, that's, what, I think, uh, the commission marks.
Yeah, I mean, always mind, we should be looking at the, the body of this, the sexual, sexual, and sexual, and sexual. All of the, like, a lot of, you know, there's some city, any of us, laundry list event, everybody wanting to see in the park. And this was accommodated all the way through to the, you know, spire, government facility. But anyways, I mean, I would be very interested to know if we have a representative from both Coast Fest, and I'm pretty sure we still have somebody here with the Stugelie. Granted, the Coast Fest wasn't even Mary Ross Park coming until year before last, if I remember correctly. But what's as though can share things, they can be shifted slightly by the event organizers to accommodate, I question, I'd love to hear some input from the representative from Coast Fest and one from the watch.
Should I have two? Is the engineering plans called to include leveling or regrading of the green space? If, because the green space is lumpy or it's not optimally graded or cancer tears or whatever, is there a plan to try to level it or regrade it?
The splash pad, grid setting, that's within the effort, they would, they would do everything necessary to cover that. For the pavilion and all of that, with the architecture, we want it for that to be considered at that time.
Yeah, I'm talking about.
The entire thing, the other thing.
Yeah, well, it's, you know, friendly level, there, there are some dips in that to the storm drain, quadrants. And, you know, it obviously can't go right over that, but you can work around that. Or in some cases where the splash pad is, we may have to just adjust one, raise it up, shift it. Yeah, it's not completely flat. There are certain elevations and that kind of site grading can take place in the pipe, for example.
And, and I mean, say, a part of our approach with this, because the consensus seemed to be we want as much open space as possible. So to some extent, we're taking a minimalist approach to everything that we're dealing with. And so, the areas that we're impacting are obviously leveling, things like that is going to be a consideration. Like I said, with the splash pad, we want to have some leveling there. With the equipment pavilion area, we want to have some leveling there. With the playground, you have no leveling there. With the native garden, you want to have some. Uh, with the native gardens, you want to have some, uh, some leveling there. But it's probably minimal because as Mrs. Stephanie ended, it looks relatively flat. Uh, the other areas, um, we are not necessarily concerned. Other than, once we get the architect involved, he's going to kind of generally look over the entire area, and then he's going to make some recommendations or whatever, we will look at that at that point. Now, we do have a topographical survey on that. And what that gives us is the highs and lows and the contours of the entire site. So we have that information. Once we make some decisions as to how we're going to move forward, all those things will be a part of the consideration.
Um, do we, we, if we have somebody from Long Island, somebody, there's somebody here, kind of suggesting, and...
One of the things, and, and I know a lot, one of the, he and I are talking about, uh, one of the organizers, fellow scout actors, so we talked about this a lot, and really, our, our talk around the Stugelie committee and with them, is it's a whole thing with looking at Southwest Corner? It's going to be a problem. Because our focus, when you're looking at the Stugelie event and all the flow is through this area, when you block off that corner, it'd be huge problems of the flow of the way that the event works. Uh, but we're all flipping, the bottom corner is out of the way. That's for us and, um, Coast Fest, that would not have utilized cornered park. Because if we try to put teams over there and teams under the farmer's market, there's such a huge separation, flow doesn't work. And that's why we had everything up on the front, so you come in park, you have two teams, and then you go into the farmer's market. It's one of the, where we got the vendor, if you put teams down there, then you had huge separation. This is competition, you think you're coming here for, to compete. And you, you have tasters that go to one side or the other, and teams will start fighting, well, I don't want to be here, I don't want to be here. All these teams, volunteers, spend four to five hundred dollars for your team to sustain three hundred million charity. And now all the money that is raised goes to the kids. So it's not like we're making any money. And also bringing a bunch of people in the community together because it built him hot within town. Um, but for us, if it were flipped to the southwest corner, um, it's all, we have no complaints.
Well, um, and, um, I know that that southwest corner is more or less placeholder, um, saying it's correctly, uh, for some sort of waterfront, you know? Yeah, restaurant. And then that's the reason that there is nothing there right now.
If it were, if it were just flipped and put in the exact same place, south of the playground, you still have plenty of room down there for a board and a chair, and it's out of the way. But, again, yeah, I don't want to be a stick in the mud, as Trent said, you know, you know? No, no splash pad, hit the smackdown. I'm all about bringing people together and, you know. But if that goes forward, you know, I, I would, we'll probably have to reconsider over it.
But I thought that your main entrance was, is where large or small areas of the park, yes, right there, you come in, you get your...
About four years ago, we moved it down to the end because it was such a congested area coming into the park. As people buy their tickets, and then we're just getting bottles up right there to the farmer's market. We moved it down to the end where we see it right there, four or five years ago, and helping the whole flow of the park, we don't have all the bottled gas and people being all congested. Then with, um, the Coast Fest, you know, they have about ten thousand people who come to that, but it's rotating ground. There's never been more than about three thousand people in the park at one time. So artists about three, four thousand, they got about three thousand, four thousand in the park at one time, too. So it's not ten, ten thousand all at one time.
Can you reorient the entrance south, yes, south of the playground? South of the playground. There you go, somewhere in there.
But if you come in from that, to the northeast of the park, and you got to walk all the way around...
People weren't used to walking, so, so, I think if you run all the crowds around them, and you have a lot of local people in the area, um...
When I talk to Mr. Penn, I'm not opposed to utilizing the idea of utilizing pavilions as a ticket booth. That's fine. Though when we lose that one tent, that's four teams that we can't accommodate.
Well, Commissioner Martin, I would say, uh, we're not totally off this section of the park. Actually, what we're doing is creating, uh, at least an opportunity for local interest. I think that's needed in the park. That's not what she's saying. That's not what she's saying. She's asking him, can their event be reinforced?
Does he have to create, or some of the tenants, um, to, to work within that? Is the white dash line, is all of that going to be...
No, no, I'm just, what I, what we did is basically create a zone, uh, that would be generally improved with the enhancement that we've been discussing. Uh, and so that's why I placed that there, to show that would be the extreme area of anything that would be impacted. There should be one tent, or half of one tent that's impacted by that, that outline. If we can, once we get this design done, if we can ship that back some more, we will do that. Uh, but, um, you know...
What, what area, come, come down, the red, the circles are...
Uh, yeah.
Yeah, that area down, that would come down, you got that area. Why can't that area?
That's where the big gap facing in, the whole thing falls off. You gotta remember, these guys have big birders, uh, stew, and everything, you gotta have double ground for these guys to set them.
The, this little block right here is where that patch facing is. The food out here, and there, comes to be almost twenty-five, thirty feet.
We get, we get ten feet from that, that tent to the sidewalk, because it's in football all the way around, boiling, set up all there, cooking thing, and then we, we snow fence all that, so nobody can get back there for safety concerns. The same thing with the farmer's market, we, we block off all the teams out right to the farmer's market, all birders behind it, so it's not a safety concern.
Well, I, let me say, in addition, I've been a part of this process from the onset of us even considering it. Maybe it should rip in twenty fifteen, and we spent all the money and all the time and the entire community, everybody at them was important, same effort, opportunity, come and give their input. I've sat here and I've watched this thing drawn out, drawn out, drawn out. I've watched U R A do their due diligence in trying to accommodate, trying to listen at everybody, take everybody's concerns in. Um, through our hand, the last meeting, the overlays with them, that was my last thing for me to say, yes, let's move forward with this project. It's because they went as far as to give every overlay of every organization that had a concern and laid out the current plan that has been put forth to make sure. And all I hear, all I hear, everybody, is that their concerns have not been considered, their concerns have not been considered. They have been considered. They've been considerable for the last three years. They have been taken into account. They have been listening at everything. Everybody that comes and say, well, we do this, then we do that, then we do that, then we do that. We come back, we do it, we do it, we do it, do it here, we do it there. And then they come back again and say, well, they hadn't been listening to us. He, the, the U R A hasn't listened at everybody that has come before them. They, they even went as far to say, well, two, two thousand fifteen plan, when we get, if we go back to the two thousand fifteen plan, everything everybody's saved has not been considered. They come in, they accommodate as best they can. It's called aggression, it's called working together, it's called being cooperative, it's called being a partnership. If we can see, I see this as an opportunity. We're saying that ground isn't leveled, we're saying that our event needs some leveling done in that park, okay? Why not come together with the effort that's going forward now and say, okay, well, we can level this park, we can readjust, we can redesign, we can do this. All I see is opportunity, but all I hear is pushback. But all I see is opportunity, and I don't see anybody wanting to give their position for opportunity. I'm going to end it right there.
Yeah. Part of my question is, and thank you, of this discussion, was if you've got that, I mean, drainage pit or whatever, pulver, um, this is the perfect opportunity if you need a fresh drain, and whatever it is we need to do to make the open field or the grassy area more level or, or, uh, more readily usable, if that's what it needs to be, then to me, that this would be the perfect time to do that.
And, and Commissioner Martin, they took, uh, this, they took, the architect, you know, last meeting, they have put so much thought into this, making this a community, a family, friendly project. The main thing I heard coming out was from that, those meetings we had, was, okay, um, Stugelie can use this pavilion area, they can have some cover, if it, if the weather is bad, if it rains, if it does that. That's all I heard come out of these meetings. How can we help them to better utilize and use this place, that they, at least they can have a covered space? If there's some cooking that needs to take place, they can use this pavilion area. If they want to do something private, that will, a private auction or something to that school, they can use this pavilion area, they can utilize that for their best interest for their fundraising abilities and event. That's all I heard. And so that's all I'm saying, is open your mind, open, open it to the opportunity and considerations that have been given. Nobody has not this, uh, disregarded your, your concerns. This has been a tedious process, and tedious, um, thoughts have gone into trying to accommodate every, we can accommodate everything, but somebody has to be willing to give a little bit to get a whole lot. And all I see is great opportunity coming from this, partnerships, um, growing outside of what we are normally used to having, and, and that's all, it's, it's considerable in order.
Thank you. Any comments, uh, are you finished with your presentation? Are you finished with your presentation?
Uh, yes, it says, uh, in the request that you approve the, uh, that master plan including, including the, uh, that will include the native gardens as a part of that master plan.
One further question, because I, I can't, I can tell that you, the books of those did pull the splash pad in closer to that floor to better accommodate, and I think that makes it a lot more workable. Certainly, any events that accommodate the events in the future are going to have to work with whatever the plans are at that, at that point in time, that's what they are, and everybody's going to have to work with it. So I do appreciate all the work and effort, all of the women to it, and it's been a huge challenge, and I really do appreciate that.
Thank you.
You know, it seems to me that a lot of concern is, is coming from these events or coming from others, and I think that's some odd. I would, I don't think that the events that are right now there, now, that Ted and Ted are talking about, are going to, sorry, they're going to get larger. That's, that's what I think the concern is. And I don't, I don't, I hope, the only way I read it is, once we build this one up, we can invest four acres, then you're going to be limited, and that's, that's what's coming back to, to me up here in that. And the topic, people on the street, and everything that's going on here, the park deck, and the lawn, you, you are, and people are, we're just changing the, what's going to happen and what the use of this park is for what we're doing. And that's what we're saying. I'm not, I really, I can't bear my, and I'm listening, you want to hear something.
Further comments, commissioners? As I add on in, that, uh, yes, we, we know Mary Ross Park is going to change. We, it's changing from a passive park to an active, active park. And we, we, Commissioner, uh, one of the goals when we started out, uh, to, uh, to revitalize our downtown area with Mary Ross Park, some of the items, uh, and, but frankly, we figured Mary Ross Park would be easiest to do, since it's going to be used by artists. However, uh... Yes.
I'm sorry, I have one more question about the native park. Um, polished taffy concrete, what is that? I'm not familiar with that, has, you can tell me.
Is it polished taffy?
Polished taffy concrete.
Yeah, they, they, you know, those...
The surface there.
Poison shells in the concrete, and for walking purposes, if you bare feet, they'll polish it and smooth it. You have the shell look, but you have a very smooth surface.
Okay, so it's not that collect, uh, you know how taffy, is it, is that shore?
If you see some taffy papers, basically, that's the, what you're basically going to look at. So you do have the shells in, in there, uh, but it's smooth, it's, it's not going to like, very little, yeah.
Also, I want to thank, uh, commissioners for, uh, uh, your comments, and also for Commissioner Martin for, uh, bringing in, uh, Stugelie, uh, Mr. T, Mr. Hill, uh, probably sharing your little thoughts as well, uh, and, uh, Mr. Bent for laying out what Coast Fest would, uh, has agreed to, uh, since, uh, the layout that you have here. We are very cognizant of all who use that park. As I said before, Mary Ross Park changed from a passive park to active park, um, and everyone knows now since the, uh, thing about it has been utilized a lot more by families that we want, that's something to look, and we want to, to bring to our downtown area as well. Um, commissioners, any other further questions or comments, uh, then this item deserves a most...
May I have a motion that we approve the, uh, Mary Ross Master Plan that was presented by the...
Second.
If it probably goes as second for the proof of revised Mary Ross, Mary Ross Park Master Plan as presented, uh, then further questions or comments? I'll tell you what I would do is, uh, Madam Chair, Madam Clerk, will you call a role in each one as you state your approval or nonapproval, you can add comments if you like.
Commissioner Casey?
I'll vote for it, but, you know, I voiced my concerns, but, yes, very much concern about the, we've only got four acres that, and I said that, again, I'm not, I would like to see a park improved, I certainly would like to see a huge one. So I, uh, we'd love to, to do it, so, but I, I really agree with the thing that I'm hearing, the folks say that, uh, they're going to grow their things, and we need to make that. And there might be some changes that need to be, be made, and I'd say that the plan is in progress, and what else?
Thanks, sir.
I, I, I mean, it's nobody else that says that, so, that's not really, that's what we're doing.
Thanks, sir.
Commissioner Harris?
I say yes, and I say it's an opportunity, so...
Thank you.
Commissioner Martin?
How about yes, um, with the only caveat that to the degree that we can look at doing the engineering or leveling, regrading, um, doing this for, uh, to make that grassy open field area more, um, uh, ready to move forward and looking to pay attention to all the events that have been placed in all this, in the park. I appreciate everybody's efforts all across the board.
Thank you.
May I put a little, yes?
Yes, and I certainly hope that the Stugelie Committee and all the other committees, uh, continue to have their events at Mary Ross Park and continue to work with us, you know, to make their events as ready as possible we can, so, yes.
Commissioner Martin?
I vote yes as well, um, and I echo, uh, same sentiments that, uh, my fellow commissioners have, have voiced, uh, concerns and also some of the, the hopeful, uh, projections that, that we're looking for, um, and that, uh, we, we are moving Mary Ross Park to be a family, friendly park that we all envision to be, and that the citizens require, uh, citizens want to be. And I, and I hope too, as, as Mr. Holt said, that as we grow Stugelie, as we grow Coast Fest, that we can also...